Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coman.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to call to order the August 6th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Coman?
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick? Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Bowers? Commissioner Kater?
Here.
Commissioner Lomis?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Thank you. On March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders related to social distancing, shelter-at-home practices, and more. These orders also included the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this one. As such, Commissioner Wade is participating by phone, and all planning commission votes tonight will be conducted by roll call. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. The Commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applicable are received, I'm sorry, when applications are received, the city planning division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of the community. We will now receive public statements. This is the time reserved for anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on items 5A through 5D, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Okay. We will now move on to the consent calendar non-public hearing items. These agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar non-public hearing item for separate consideration? Okay. In that case, may I have a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the consent calendar non-public hearing items?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar non-public hearing item 4A.
Commissioner Bell? May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Commissioner Kater? Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Coman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioners Rudnick and Bowers absent.
Thank you. We will now move on to the consent calendar public hearing items. This section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The planning director will read the items on the consent calendar to ensure the public has an understanding of the items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that the items be removed for discussion. If the item is not removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. Mr. Johnson, would you like to read the items, please?
Thank you, Chair Coman. Good evening, Commissioners, members of the public. Thank you for attending tonight. There are four items on the consent agenda as displayed on the screen. The first three items are extensions of time for vesting tentative track map 7217, 7218, and 7219. These tracks are located adjacent to each other just east of Santa Fe Way between Olive Drive and Rena Road. Track 7217 consists of 124 single-family lots, one commercial lot, and one multifamily lot on 39 acres. Track 7218 consists of 239 single-family lots on 74 acres, and Track 7219 consists of 77 single-family lots on 20 acres. Item 5D is tentative parcel map 12334, which is a request to subdivide 596 acres into two residential parcels located at the northeast corner of Palladino Drive and Masterson Street. Parcel 1 consists of 96 acres, and Parcel 2 consists of 500 acres. Both parcels will allow for future single-family track residential development. This concludes reading of the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. At this time, I will open all the consent calendar public hearing items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a consent calendar public hearing items? Again, this is not the time to take testimony just to have the item moved for a hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar public hearing item? Okay. At this time, the public hearing items on all consent calendar... items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the consent calendar public hearing items not removed incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations? I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kater.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Bell. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Coman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Rudnick and Bowers absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It appears we have no public hearing items on our agenda, and that will take us to workshops. And Mr. Johnson, would you like to introduce the workshop portion of the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Chair Coman. So this is a receive-and-file item, so no action is being taken by your commission tonight. That said, we have a special presentation on the Thomas Rhodes Improvement Program by Mr. Topete, Civil Engineer 4 with the Public Works Department. He's the project manager for Centennial and has been with TRIP since its beginning in 2006.
I'm sorry, how do you say your name?
Luis Topete. Okay, perfect. I got control here. Okay. All right, much better. Good evening. Luis Topete with the TRIP program, the Centennial Corridor Project Manager, and it is a pleasure for me to give you a brief update on our TRIP program. So thank you for the invitation. So let's start with a little bit of a history. I'm sure you're familiar with the TRIP program, but we started back in 2006 when then Congressman Bill Thomas brought about $720 million to the region. 630 of those are the ones that we are administering, we as the city, through the TRIP program and our partners, Caltrans, KernCOG, the County of Kern, Federal Highways, and we hired Parsons as our consultant to help us out with this big program back in 2006. The $630 million came from Federal Highways, and to date, our program has grown to about $1.4 billion. Through time, keep in mind, 2016, we started, we're in 2020, so 14 years later, that is the list of projects that we have completed so far. As you can see at the bottom, more than $500 million worth of construction only, and I emphasize "construction only." All of these projects started from ground zero, from initial study to environmental technical studies permitting right-of-way acquisitions, utility relocations, finally design, and then at the end, construction. So a lot of progress, and all of that thanks to the good partnership that we have with everyone in our TRIP program, all the stakeholders in the program. Like I said, Caltrans, the County of Kern, KernCOG, everybody, it's been just an excellent relationship with everybody. And then on top of that, right now, we have a few projects that are under construction, two in that list, the one on the top and the one on the bottom. I can easily move them now to the list of completion projects. We're practically done with those two projects. One is Centennial Phase 1, the Kern River Bridge Improvement, about $41 million worth of construction. And then at the bottom, the Stockdale-Inos Roundabout, also practically done. A few lights that we have to replace out there. Other than that, we're done with those two projects. So they will be added to the list of completed projects here in the next couple of weeks, probably. And then going down the list, we have the Centennial, I'm sorry, the Belt Terrace Operational Improvement Project, which is Phase 2 of the Centennial Project. Belt Terrace is expected to be done by the end of this year, November, December type of, kind of the timeline on that project. The Bakersfield Freeway Connector, we're about 40% done. We have easily another year to go. We're scheduled to finish that project by August of 2021. The 24th Street Improvement, 86%, however, this month, August, we will be finalizing the rest of the paving and striping, and then in September, and maybe going into September, a week or two into September, we will be completing the irrigation systems and the landscaping, and we will be done with that project. I know it caused a lot of headaches for a lot of people in that area, being in downtown, but the good news is that we're almost done with that project, too. Centennial Main Line, Phase 4, that is the largest of our projects, as you can see, $147 million worth of construction, only 25% done. We have a couple of years to go in this one project. It is a huge, huge project, and I'll touch a little bit more on that one project. So let's talk a little bit about Centennial, the Centennial Corridor. As I mentioned, it's the largest project in our program. It took us about eight years to complete the environmental phase in that one project, very complex and controversial to a certain point type of project. We had to obtain about 200 residential properties and 30 commercial properties. The right-of-way acquisitions were in the order of $140 million before we started construction. And before we started construction, we decided to split that project. Centennial as a whole was in the order of $500 million. We knew we did not have enough funding through the earmark that was given to the city in 2006, but we have about $50 million left. So that was one of the reasons why we split Centennial into four phases. So we had enough to split it to Phase 1 and go directly into construction so that we use up the rest of the money. And then, the initial plan for the rest of the three phases was to borrow money. However, there were some grant opportunities and other programs that we obviously were very interested in applying for, so we split the rest of the project in such a way that it would match the requirements for those different grants. In 2018, we were able to obtain additional funding so that we could complete our biggest project. And this is the list of the additional, or part of it, because there were some additional monies that came from our local contribution. But $25 million came from the SB 1 bill through the Trade Corridor Enhancement Program. This is a state program, and the money went directly to Phase 3. This is the Bakersfield Freeway Connector. We are so proud that the $50 million that you see under INFRA, we were one of only two projects in the western U.S. that received this grant. That money went directly to the main line, the big project, the $140-plus million, and so did the $63 million from STIP program, that's another state money. And then through conversations with our partner, Caltrans, they contributed $34 million out of their SHOP program, and that qualified, the Belt Terrace Project, Phase 2 of the Centennial, qualified for that type of funding. So again, 2018 was a very successful year for us. That allowed us to move forward with the rest of Centennial and not having to borrow any money. So that was really a great accomplishment on everybody's part. So let's talk a little bit about Centennial, the construction that we're doing. The basic goal is to connect the Westside Parkway that the city had built back in 2013, is when we opened it, and connect it to 58. And in different colors in this exhibit, you can see the different phases of Centennial. Phase 1, like I said, that one is pretty much done in July of 2020 for completion, roughly $41 million. And you can see that Phase 1 in orange there, which is basically the construction of two additional bridges, one going over the Kern River and the other one going over Truxton Avenue. The other two were widening of existing bridges that we had built with Westside Parkway. This is a rendering of what the project would look like when it was done, and now, two years, almost three years later, this is a photo of the actual project, basically completed now. As you can see, there is no traffic on it yet, and that is because we have to complete all three, the remaining three phases of Centennial before we can put traffic on Centennial. As part of that project, we had to improve some of the, or actually, this is the southbound Mohawk to eastbound 58. We had to do some improvements in that ramp. And then on the photo to the left, that is a long off-ramp, which is actually the first ramp that you will be able to take if you're coming westbound from 58. This is the first ramp to exit the freeway, which will be exiting at Mohawk. So there will be no ramps on and off, let's say, on California or Stockdale. So all the way from 99, it's about 1.2 miles, and this is the first ramp that I will be there. On Phase 2, in blue in that exhibit, Phase 2 basically reconstructs two big structures, bridges, one on Belt Terrace and the other one connecting 99 to 58. In that aerial photo, by 58, you can see the old connector. That old connector bridge was replaced by the new bridge that we built, except that it's got now two lanes instead of one that we used to have. That project, roughly $32 million awarded in October of 2018, and like I said, we're expecting to complete the project in December of this year. Some of the photos from the project, as you can see, the Belt Terrace Bridge on the right, pretty much done. We are removing the false work, which is all the wooden structure that you see that is supporting the project until it gets the strength that is needed. So we're already removing all of that false work. And then on the left, a big retaining wall that probably everybody has seen from 99 going northbound. That is going to allow us to obtain more right-of-way, more space for auxiliary lanes in the future that we will be building with our Centennial Phase 4. We're going to have an auxiliary lane there that will connect Main on-ramp up on 99 and will connect to 99. I have a better exhibit that I will show that in a minute. Phase 3 of Centennial in red here. This project includes three structures, those in blue that you see there, basically the one on 58. We're going to, that is an existing bridge that we're going to widen because we have to improve that loop ramp that takes traffic from westbound 58 to southbound 99, and we're going to build what we call a cut-and-cover tunnel. That is that little structure in blue that you see in that exhibit that is going to go under 58 and will connect to southbound 99. The other large structure that you see there in blue is a bridge that will take traffic from southbound 99 and will connect directly to Main Avenue. So in this interchange with 58 and 99, we will have a movement that if you're traveling eastbound from Westside Parkway, you will have a dedicated ramp that will take traffic straight to Main Avenue without having to go into 99. And then you will have, obviously, your traffic that wants to go to 99 southbound, so we will have another dedicated ramp for that. And obviously, if you're going to continue on 58, you're going to have that. So Phase 3, it's got a construction cost of about $49 million, and we're expecting to get this project completed by August of next year. And these are some of the photos for the project. This is, on the left, you can see there the bridge, the existing bridge that we already widened, and then we're starting to build that cut-and-cover tunnel that will take traffic to southbound 99. On the right is the big structure that will take traffic from southbound 99 to Main Avenue. Lastly, we have our Phase 4 in green here. The darker green that you see there are all the bridges that we have in this project. The cost for this project is about $147 million. We started in about July of last year, and we, like I said, this is a three-year project, so by August of 2022 is when we're expecting to complete this phase and open the entire corridor. Some of the photos of that one project, contractor is basically concentrating all of his efforts on the different bridges that we have. Up on top, on the left, starting on the left, we have work on the Stockdale Bridge. We're going to have a bridge going over Stockdale in the middle there. That is the bridge going over California, is right next to our new police station there. And if you drive California, you can see all the false work already going up. We're getting ready to start building that project, I mean, that bridge. On top, on the top right, that is La Mirada Bridge, it's a local street. So we're going to have a couple of bridges on local streets. The freeway is going to go under those bridges. This is in the residential area by Centennial Park. And then at the bottom, on the left, we're going to have another bridge going over the Carrier Canal and Commerce Way that will connect eventually just right there around the corner, a few feet from Truxton Avenue. And then in the middle, we have the two bridges going over Real Road. Those are the two bridges. One of them will take the traffic directly to Main Avenue, the other one will connect traffic to southbound 99. And then finally, on the right, that is another local, another bridge going over Ford Street. So a lot of activity as far as bridges. Again, we still have two years to go, but we have a lot of bridges to construct with this project. This is a photo looking northbound on 99, and in that photo, you can see all the work going just right of 99, northbound 99. There's a lot of activity there, and here is what that location is going to look like in the future. Let me see if I'm able to point. Oh, yes. So this is auxiliary lanes that I was talking about, that will take traffic from Main Avenue. It's going to go under the connector bridge to 58 and eventually connect to northbound 99. So what we were trying to do is avoid the weaving from this traffic wanting to go to northbound 99, and then the traffic from northbound 99 wanting to go to the connector. So we have this auxiliary lane that will take traffic directly to 99. Then on the southbound direction, this is the big structure that you see out there, and it will take traffic directly from southbound 99 to Main. So the exit now is going to start way back here rather than where it is right now, somewhere back there. And then the two other ramps, one connecting to Main Avenue, oops, what did I do? And, sorry about that. Anyways, so there's a lot of activity right now on 99 and 58. This is the residential area, Centennial Park area. This is what it looks like. I was going to say now, but this is a little bit old. This is about two months old. We already have a bridge going over or at, this is La Mirada, we already have a bridge here. The freeway is going to go under La Mirada and then under Morello Way here. Here is a rendering of what that is going to look like once we're done with the project. And the last photo that I have here, this is close to Truxton Avenue, that loop ramp, and once we're done, this is what it's going to look like. August of 2022 approximately is when we're planning to complete this project. So that's what I have as far as a presentation, but I left the best for the end. I have a drone flight. I don't know if you want to have access. Perfect.
The flight begins along Freeway 99 in a northerly direction. To the right, the last pour has just been made for the retaining wall separating Wyville Road and the future Main to northbound 99 auxiliary lane. Below, bridge post-tensioning had just been completed on the new Belt Terrace overcrossing. Removal of false work below the bridge is to follow in the next few weeks. We continue north beyond the Belt Terrace Project and enter the Bakersfield Freeway Connector and Main Line Projects. Below and to the left, the new Belt Terrace Pump Plant has been constructed and is currently undergoing electrical and pump hardware installations. To the right of this structure is the old pump plant, awaiting demolition. Below, deck steel reinforcement is being installed- Below, deck steel reinforcement is being installed on the new southbound 99 to Main off-ramp bridge. On both sides of 99, columns are being constructed for the new northbound 99 to westbound 58 connector bridge. Below and to the left, the forming of footing for a new sound wall is underway to separate the residential area from the freeway. Within the loop ramp, a tunnel is being constructed for the westbound-to-southbound movement. Adjacent to Kaiser are two new bridge columns for the northbound-to-westbound connector, as mentioned earlier. Below, two of the four bridges spanning Real Road have been construction. To the right, an MSC retaining wall has been constructed in Backfield. To the left, two local streets await construction of cul-de-sacs and screen walls. We continue west, then northwest toward the Stockdale Highway undercrossing. The last of the project's pile driving is underway at the south side of Stockdale for the south bridge abutment. Pile driving and footing construction has already been completed on the north side. Four columns for each row have been constructed. An additional three columns for each row are in progress. North of the Stockdale undercrossing is the Ford Avenue undercrossing. False work has been erected for this bridge, and steel placement is underway. Between Ford Avenue and La Mirada overcrossing, the freeway transitions from above-grade to a depressed roadway. The sound walls on each side is an indicator of this. The La Mirada overcrossing bridge deck has already been poured. The La Mirada Bridge and the roadway east and west of it would need to be open to the traveling public prior to the construction of the Morello Way overcrossing. To the right, a drainage basin has started to take shape. This basin accommodates for stormwater runoff in the depressed roadway. At this section, reinforced concrete pipe is being installed and buried. To the north, Morello Way remains open to the public, but will soon be replaced with a bridge spanning the freeway. As we continue north of Morello Way, the freeway transitions back to above ground to span California Avenue. This transition is where the existing sound walls end. To the left and along Delray Court, retaining wall footing is under construction. A retaining wall will not be needed on the right side, adjacent to Eastern Drive. We are now approaching California Avenue, where the crews are preparing in the next few weeks to erect false work for the bridge placement. Like Stockdale Highway, California Avenue will not have freeway ramps to connect to. North of this bridge and adjacent to the new police building, crews are excavating for a retaining wall footing. A similar retaining wall will also be constructed on the right and adjacent to Eastern Drive. The freeway continues to be above-grade and eventually spans both the Carrier Canal and Commerce Drive with one long biaduct bridge. Six bridge columns will hold this bridge midway, three of which the footings have been formed. The other three are underway. North of Commerce Drive, a portion of the abutment steel has been placed. Where the Main Line Project connects with the Westside Parkway, earthwork import is underway. This is also the location of the Kern River Bridge Improvements Project, which is currently in the process of completion.
So, lastly, I just want to acknowledge Tom Webster. He was the one that did this drone flight for us. He's been helping us, so he did an excellent job. And Gilbert Vega with our TRIP Division, he always helps us with photos and putting presentations together, so just want to acknowledge them. And with that, if you have any questions, that concludes my presentation.
I had a question, just curious about the amount of earthwork that was, that's been done to create all these new lanes and these new routes. Is there, the landscaping that has been taken out, is it being put back in? Or are those sections of 99 and the new corridor, are they landscaped or not landscaped on the remaining banks?
There, there is plans for, well, keep in mind that we took a lot of the slopes, so there's not going to be any room for landscaping on 99. It's going to be a wall, kind of like the one we did with Beltway just south of Main, is just a wall. So, there is not a lot of opportunity. Where we have opportunity for landscaping under a different plan, we will have some landscaping. It's part of our environmental mitigation that we're going to have some landscaping for Centennial. Yes.
Will be installed with the opening of the project, or is that, is that a future project?
That's a future project, yes.
Okay.
Any other commissioners have questions? Yeah, that's an awesome project. You guys are doing a great job out there. It's like our modern-day pyramid project, it seems like. You guys have been at it for a long time.
Yes, yes.
It's kind of like ancestral work, pass it down to your kids, you know, they keep on working on it. You know, my, my, my biggest concern has been that Highway 58. I've lived here since 1994, and Highway 58 between 99 and Weed Patch Highway has been under construction ever since I've been here. And if you go eastbound on Highway 58 in the morning when the sun's out, you can't tell where to drive, because there's so many lane changes that have been done over the years that it's a little bit, a little bit frustrating.
Yes, yes, we have, we have, we have tried. Our, our projects, there's, as part of the TRIP, we completed our projects on 58. Everything that you see right now, for the most part, is Caltrans. Our only portion of 58 is basically from the westbound 58 to northbound 99, right at that. Anywhere from there to Real Road, which is the last half a mile, is, we're gonna make some improvements with our Centennial Project. But everything else that you see out there is pretty much Caltrans. And we also were aware of the complaints about the lines. It's, it's very, it's a very difficult situation, because a certain time during the year, during the day, you have the sun right there, and you can't see the lines. We have tried many things. Caltrans is, came up with new striping, and that's what they're going to do with our project, the new striping. I don't know if you have noticed, in some, in some portions, they have a white, your typical white stripe followed by a black line. They're trying everything, but it's a very difficult situation, because the alignment of the sun right there at a certain time of the day.
Do you know if there's any plans to redo the off-ramp of 58 to northbound 99?
I'm not aware of any project that will, will do that. Westbound 58?
Westbound 58, where it connects to northbound 99, so it kind of goes under the, goes under...
There's a tunnel.
Yeah, exactly. Is there any plan to redo any of that, or not?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not in this space.
Yeah, I can, I can inquire with...
And then what about the Main Avenue on-ramp to 99? Is that going to get changed out as well, to northbound 99?
To northbound 99, we, as part of one of our TRIP projects, we repaved, and I think we widened, we improved a little bit. And then, as part of Centennial, we're gonna pave that again, and that's, remember, that is the one that is going to become a dedicated auxiliary lane to take that traffic directly to 99.
Does that make it easier to get on 99 at Main Avenue then, because you'll have a, a long...
Yes.
Auxiliary road to get onto.
Exactly, yes, exactly.
All right, well, you guys are doing a great job out there. It's a lot of work, and I think that, for me, the interruption in traffic has been minimal, considering what all you're doing out there, so, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you for your presentation today, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes item number seven. Our workshops moves us on to communications. Mr. Johnson, do you have any communications?
We will not be having a meeting. The next scheduled meeting will be followed up by the following scheduled meeting. In other words, we'll let you know when there's going to be another meeting.
No meeting until you call us?
Correct.
Yeah, don't, don't come, we'll call you. All right. Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Commissioner comments? Any commissioner have any comments? Okay, I'll take this opportunity to have one comment. With all the change that went on at the time, we had our elections, Mr. Kader was not here, and I think you might have missed the meeting around that time. And I don't know if I'm having Alzheimer's moment or not, but I don't think we ever properly thanked you for your service as the chair. You did an excellent job and set a really good example, so thank you.
Thank you. It was an honor. Thank you.
All right, so I guess we move on to adjournment. Now I'll say the meeting is adjourned. We'll see you whenever Mr. Johnson decides we can use this again, okay?